To the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, November 8th, 2017, may I have a motion to move into executive session?
I move the board entering to executive session for the purpose of personnel and student issues under Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A, numbers 1 and 10, and administrative function items under Maryland General Provisions Code Article Section 3-104.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, we'll see you in an hour. All right, I'd like to reconvene in the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, November 8th, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations to all of our freshly minted doctoral candidates.
Doctor, doctor.
One at the end of the table, who else?
I saw Dr. Jaffers.
Dr. Caffers.
There you go, Dr. Jaffers.
Let's see, Dr. Farrell.
Dr. Farrell was with us this morning.
Not here.
We have, of course, the older, Dr. Montgomery was.
I know, but she's in that cohort.
Oh, Dr. Gilman, yes.
Gilman, even though, you're an old school doctor now, you've had yours for a while.
A few weeks.
Oh, there we go, another one, see, so congratulations to everyone, I love your carpooling and canoeing and...
Eleven in the cohort and all eleven finishing the program, I mean, that's really quite, that's really quite something. University of Maryland really did a wonderful job of making sure that we all got to the finish line.
Somehow I missed the canoe story, so that one you'll have to share.
We have photos.
That was a little right somewhere.
Perhaps, perhaps Dr. Jaffers and Dr. Montgomery in December can actually present to the board the canoe story and I can share the photos that I took of it and the video. It's pretty entertaining.
That would be great.
That's, you know, how we work with one another. Some of us end up in the water.
So anyway, congratulations to all, and I will also give credit probably to all of you, I'm sure you all supported each other 100% going through that, so I'm not going to give all the credit to the University of Maryland.
No.
And with that, you may begin.
So, this last week, I was able to attend two of our academies, like capstone type things, it was the STEM Festival, STEM Exposition, which isn't their final capstone, but it was an exhibition of all of the work that STEM 4 through STEM 12 has done, and then I was also able to attend the GIS Capstone Symposium. So, at the STEM Festival, I was there as a STEM student, so I was a little bit biased there, but I got to talk to a lot of STEM students about their career choices, and even if they were in middle school, they were talking about, you know, what colleges they might want to attend, or what fields they might want to pursue, but I think the main part that I loved about the event was that we had a lot of incoming students come in who were interested in STEM Academy and just wanted to learn about what the program offered and what types of things we did, and I think a lot of the exhibitions that we had were rather entertaining, and they were very hands-on, so I think it was a great event to showcase the fact that STEM is very rigorous, but at the same time, it's very enjoyable, and within each STEM grade, we were very close-knit, and I feel like as students were coming in, they saw that, and that was one of the things that helped advocate the fact that no matter how challenging STEM may be, we're all there to support each other, so that was a key thing that we tried to sell as we talked to students. And then the GIS Capstone Symposium was a complete 180 in the sense that it was their, you know, culminating project that they've worked about a year, a year and a half on now, and it was fascinating to see the different types of efforts they put in, some people focused on advocacy for a certain topic, others were focusing on educating the community, and others even had experience-based projects, some people went to, one person went to China, another went to Uganda, I believe, and other people, they stayed within the community, but they worked with different groups, some worked with the Health Department, some worked with the local library, so I was very pleased to see how passionate the students were, and they've clearly put quite a lot of work into their projects, but it shows that both events show that no matter how small our county may be compared to some other counties, we still offer many opportunities for students to showcase their talents, and I feel like that was highlighted throughout this week very well.
Follow that, Mrs. Weaver.
Wow, wild conversation, talk about showcasing talent. I went to the Chautauqua High School play, The Three Musketeers, and let me tell you, it was fantastic, so if you missed it, you missed a great show, the students, from what I understand, only had like 33 days to put this together, and a lot of it, when I talked to some of the students afterwards, a lot of the, I guess you would say more the ad-lib type thing, like they, they worked it out amongst themselves, some great stunts, like at the end, the one student coming in on a rope at the end.
That was Dr. Mars.
It was Dr. Mars on, so, I mean, it was great, and the one young lady that was the sister of the fourth Musketeer, I am going to tell you, she, she was able to pick up another student and carry her, I said, you know, you must, you must really be strong, but she said that they worked all these logistics out, you know, just her and the other student, and it was great, it was a fun evening, I went with my husband, we had an enjoyable evening, and also, as everyone knows, Veterans Day is coming up, November 11th, please make sure that you seek out, especially an older veteran. I'm not talking about you, Jim.
A veteran, veteran.
Yes, but maybe, if you look, try to seek out someone that is maybe from World War II, because those, they have some very unique stories to share, you know, so just take a little bit of time and maybe seek someone out, you know, like I said, especially an older veteran that has served.
You know, there's laws against besmirching the elderly, so, on my next.
You were next.
I went to the Patuxent Partnership Annual Meeting about a week and a half ago, it was the first time I had an opportunity to go, I know a lot of players, Gene Townsend and Bonnie Green, of course, you all know, it was very interesting, Nancy Easterling was there, talking about Soddy Lee, also Regina Fadden, Dr. Fadden, she runs the St. Mary's County, excuse me.
St. Mary's City.
Yes, St. Mary's City Museum, and she was very interesting, and there was a lady also talked about, in the, talked about the Marine Museum over in Calvert County, and there was a lot of interesting things that she talked about, about the evolution, you know, going back to the Neolithic times, and how Chesapeake Bay was formed, we all know that at one time, it was just the Saskatchewan River, small river, and of course, with the Ice Age, it broadened out, that was a quite interesting meeting. I next attended the STEM meeting over at Fairgrounds, really interesting folks, very enlightening exhibits, I talked to one of the ladies that was recruiting women in STEM education, and she was with the Navy, and she was mentoring, mentoring a lot of high school kids, and trying to encourage women to get into STEM technologies, and I remarked to her that when I was in college, sometime after the Cretaceous period, the, there was about 240 students that sat in the class, there was one lady, and everybody else looked just like me, so things have changed, so I asked her the results, she says, we're not doing as well as we thought, we were hoping, we're making progress, but we need to do a lot better job, so I thought that was very enlightening, and of course, I went to the CIP fair over at Forest Center, very interesting exhibit, some of the kids were doing, one gentleman was promoting and advocacy for the country of, I'm sorry, I've got a mental blind, but in Syria, the, there's three factions going, and he talked with great knowledge about, understanding about the Syrians, about the Turks, and all of the surrounding countries, I also talked to a gentleman on alternative energy resources, we had a really interesting debate, because he was, he wasn't arguing, but he was talking about the different energy resources, we've got natural gas, we have coal, we have petroleum distillates, we have green energy initiatives, and we have nuclear energy, and he broke that down into the, to sort of like a percentage of the energy resources that we get in our country, and it was quite interesting that green energy represented, I believe, was like 12%, coal was around 12, 14, 18%, petroleum and gas was well over 50%, nuclear was not very large, so he was talking about the merits of each particular energy resource, and what it's going to cost to make a lot of these shifts away from fossil energy, so the, the students, I was very impressed with a lot of the exhibits that they, they showed at, at the conference.
Let's see, Dr. Smith and Ms. McCourt and I had a meeting last week with Commissioner President Randy Guy, Commissioner Hewitt, and Dr. Bridgett, just to go over our regular quarterly meeting, we did kind of set up a preliminary agenda for a future joint meeting, so that will get on the, on the books and on the calendar soon, not to belabor the point of the GIS students, but they, you know, they did a fantastic job, there was a lot of, you know, from opioid, opioid addiction, to one of the, one of the students did the whole presentation on fake news, and, you know, which was, which was quite analyzing the headlines over the past, what, 18 months or two years, which was very interesting.
During a Blotterberger.
Mm-hmm, I think Mr. or Dr. Smith tweeted a picture of his, of his presentation out, one of the students also had set up an entire classroom to show the different stages as to, when you have autistic students, or, you know, and how to deescalate them and get them back into their comfort zone, it was, it was tremendous, it was very warm in there, so hats off to all of the parents and students who's, who were in there for two hours, just somewhat melting a little bit, since it was a very warm evening, but hats off to them, and also to Ms. Manda, she was, she was there troubleshooting, I think, I'm sure they, they put the capacity of the Forest Center Wi-Fi at, at maximum based on the number of iPads and computers and everyone that was drawing down on that, so, congratulations to all, and, you know, maybe they can kick back and enjoy their, their last three marking periods of school a little bit, so. Ms. Washington?
I attended the College of Southern Maryland Adult Education Program graduation and ceremony for the GED program, about 27 students received their GED, and many of those students were former St. Mary's County Public School students who had to withdraw from school for a variety of reasons, and the program proves it is never too late to get your GED, and learning never stops. The student speaker talked about her challenges while in high, high school, and the challenges in getting her GED, for, I tried to attend these ceremonies each year, and one of them was a parent who was speaking, and said she dropped out of school, now her children were in high school, and her children said to her, oh, Mom, I want to drop out of school, she said, you can't do that, she said, well, Mom, they said, Mom, you did it, why can't we, so she made up her mind that she was going to go back and get her GED, and be a positive role model for her students. I want to thank the College of Southern Maryland, they did two wonderful things for these graduates, they offered them automatic admission to the college, and gave them $500 scholarship money, it was a celebratory time with a lot of tears, a lot of family support, and it was a journey for many of the students, so later on, during this Board of Education meeting, we're going to have an opportunity to talk about ways to keep our students in schools, because our students, many of them have challenges which children shouldn't have, their adult challenges, so that they can finish school, and I'm looking forward to hearing that presentation, thank you.
I also attended the CSM Adult Education Graduation, and that's been unfortunately the only thing I have been able to do, because many thanks to my one-year-old, 80-pound puppy who decided two weeks ago that he wanted to go on a jaunt, and the end result was I wound up taking quite a bad fall, and I have a broken elbow, so if my doctor's watching, I'm only riding a little bit, I swear, and, and concussion and some other things, so, so I've been trying to behave myself so that I can heal quickly and not have to be put back in the splint and everything else they fixed me up with, so, so I will be back out there, just, it's going to take a little while longer.
That's completely understandable, my goodness. So, one of the most fun things I've done in the last two weeks was I did get to go to Martin's West for the Teacher of the Year Gala, where Kristin McIntyre, she's in the back there, she was resplendent in a lovely, lovely gown, and her husband Jeff joined her, and he was tuxedoed with, with matching tie, they were quite the fetching couple, Terry Buckler, the Assistant Principal from Greenview, also joined two teachers, Amanda Kellum and Carrie Maines were in attendance, Kathy Reinicki also was in attendance, a former Teacher of the Year, who is also in the very last stages of becoming doctor as well through the University of Notre Dame, we had Becky Loker was with us, and I was joined by Dr. Montgomery, it was a really, it always is, it's a beaut, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful event, and congratulations certainly to Kristin McIntyre, I believe we're going to be talking about all of you wonderful, recognized people in just a little bit, but that was really quite a lovely night. I was up at Pazam for the Maryland Negotiating Services Retreat in Ocean City, so we really had two days where the superintendents were speaking with one another and with Dr. Salmon, the State Superintendent, talking about issues that are coming forward across the state, across the nation, what the State Board is considering, what's looking like it might come forward in legislation, and the, obviously, the interaction was so productive that she said, you know, Scott, I really need to come down and see that wonderful work that you're doing in St. Mary's County Public Schools, so she came down yesterday, and we went to Lexington Park Elementary School where we toured, we had a great conversation with a handful of teachers about the responsive classroom, and social emotional learning, and how we create an environment for kids to learn, and the emphasis when we are in creating that environment, we make sure that everybody feels, these are the three, these are the three major tenants, we make sure that everybody feels as though they belong, we have to make children and adults feel as though they belong, you have to make everybody feel as though they are significant, that their contributions are significant, and then the last, my favorite, is, it's supposed to be fun, learning is supposed to be fun and full of joy, and Dr. Jaffers over there, he just kind of chuckled, math is fun, right? Math is full of joy, so it was a really great visit at, at Lexington Park Elementary School, then we went down to Spring Ridge, so that she could, Dr. Salmon could tour Spring Ridge Middle School, she, if you remember last year, when we were doing our key ceremony for the school itself, she wasn't able to join, and she was just assuming the role, she sent Carol Ann Williamson in her stead, she wanted to come down and actually see the facility, and she got to interact with some of the STEM teachers and students there, so she was just really impressed, and that was really quite a fantastic opportunity for us to showcase at the state level, so once again, she now wants us to come forward and present at the state, before the State Board, to talk about responsive classroom, and to talk about some of the things that are going on within the STEM program, so, who knows, Ms. Concari, perhaps before we conclude our year, we could find an opportunity to go up to the State Board and, and present a little bit about what, what makes this, our school system so very special. The last thing I want to talk about is, I did get the opportunity last week to go to Great Mills High School and visit the ARC, the ARC, what is the ARC, you say? The ARC is the Attendance Resource Center that they've put together, they've, they've put a, a full-time, dedicated, attendance-oriented secretary, pupil personnel worker, a school psychologist, and then a gentleman working within the McKinney-Vento Grant, all together to create a space for kids where they can really focus on making sure that any barrier that is preventing them from regularly attending school, and it turns out teenagers have some legitimate barriers, and then they have some self-created barriers, and so the ARC is dedicated to getting them all on board and moving forward, it's really, it's really quite wonderful, they've only been working for two months, but they've made some, some fantastic relationships with students and with parents and guardians, so probably, we're going to let it, we're going to let them roll for another month or so, but I definitely want to bring them before you in January, because that's usually when we see attendance take a little, a little dip, a little dip in January and February, so it'd be great to have them come forward and talk about some of their successes, but it was really, it's been a really great couple of, of two weeks, and I look forward to our recognition this morning, so thank you very much. That's back to you.
That's it, are you all done? I wish, I didn't know if you were pausing for the tenure.
No, I am all, I am all done, I am all done, thank you.
All right, so, next up, we have American Education Week, Dr. Marne.
No, not Dr. Marne, Dr. Beasley.
Dr. Beasley, switching up on me.
I'm the runner-up. Good morning, he was unable to fulfill his duties as Miss America. I would like to ask the following individuals to come forward and stand over this way, Ms. Jill Morris, President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County, Dr. Alex Jaffers, President of St. Mary's Association of Supervisors and Administrators, Ms. Kristin McIntyre, our St. Mary's County Teacher of the Year from Greenview Knowles Elementary School, Ms. Karen Timmons, our Educational Support Professional of the Year from Lexington Park Elementary School, Ms. Mary Jane Self, our Washington Post Teacher of the Year from the Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center, and Dr. Jennifer Gilman, our Washington Post Principal of the Year from Hollywood Elementary School. This year, American Education Week will be observed from November 13th through November 17th, during that week, we will also be observing Education Support Professionals Day on Wednesday, November 15th. American Education Week is a time when we celebrate and thank those who make a difference in our schools, it's a week for publicly spotlighting how important education is to the health and well-being of our children, it's a week for continuing to build partnerships between schools and communities on behalf of all of our students. Together, parents, community leaders, teachers, education support professionals, substitute educators, counselors, and administrators are an integral part of the education process as they work together to provide a safe, healthy, and nurturing learning environment for students. American Education Week spotlights the importance of providing every child with a quality education, and the need for everyone to do his or her part in making our schools great, the individuals standing before you proudly represent their colleagues across SMCPS who do this every single day. Dr. Smith will now read the Board of Education Resolution designating next week as American Education Week.
And I believe we have copies of each resolution, so that you may return, hang this resolution Whereas, the week of November 13th through the 17th, 2017, has been designated an American Education Week by the National Education Association in an effort to celebrate public education and honor the individuals who make a difference and ensure that every child receives a quality education, and whereas, education is a pillar of democracy and a cornerstone of American opportunity that gives our children the foundation they need to understand and appreciate our nation's values of freedom, civility, and equality, and whereas, public schools bring together adults and children, teachers and volunteers, businesses, civic leaders, and elected officials, who all have a stake in the public education and play an important role in inspiring children to learn inside and outside of the classroom, and whereas, public schools provide our children with outstanding opportunities in academics, athletics, fine arts, vocational training, and extracurricular activities to equip them with the skills and knowledge needed to grow, thrive, and succeed in our global society, and, this is the last whereas, whereas, all educator, all education employees, including teachers, principals, assistant principals, administrators, counselors, par educators, custodians, cafeteria workers, office personnel, and other support personnel deserve our gratitude, respect, and support for their professionalism and commitment to our schools, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes November 13th through the 17th, 2017, as American Education Week, and November 15th, 2017, as Education Support Professional Day in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and encourages all citizens to join people across the United States in showing support for public education and expressing appreciation to school personnel, and celebrating the education that our children receive from public school, signed this day, November 8th, 2017, by all members of the Board and Secretary-Treasurer Scott Smith. So, congratulations, thank you very much, let me hand you each a resolution. This is a great time for clapping. Did either one of you need to make comments? Wish to make comments? If you do, you have to stand, step over to the microphone.
Dr. Jaffers.
Dr. Jaffers?
I'm not, I did not plan any further comment.
I just want to acknowledge the Board of Directors, some of us SMAS.
He's not standing at the microphone.
Bonjour.
Good morning, I just wanted to acknowledge some of my SMAS Board of Directors, Mike Watson, if you could just be acknowledged, Mike Egan, Jen Gilman, so we have a lot of representatives here from SMAS, and we are very fortunate to work in St. Mary's County, and also work on behalf of our students, so thank you.
Thank you very much, one and all, thank you.
School Psychology Awareness Week.
Yes, another, another week of awareness, recognition. Next week is also, we are also recognizing our school psychologists with School Psychology Awareness Week next week, in the role that they play in our schools, their expertise, using their expertise in mental health, learning, and behavior, they, they help our students succeed academically with their behaviors and social and emotional learning as well, they conduct assessments to identify students' strengths and their needs, and then they use that information to consider any supports or interventions that may need to be put in place, they provide counseling for individuals and for groups, and they continually consult and collaborate with our teachers, other school staff, and our parents as well. So, the National Association of School Psychologists has their theme this year for, the Awareness Week is Power Up and Be a Positive Charge, and it's really looking at our actions that spark a positive growth to evoke change in other students, in other people, we want to look at the talents and the skills and the behaviors of students, and of course, modeling that our school psychologists to look at the growth and contributions that they can give in their community, so we know that positives, positive actions empower people, they create compassion, and they strengthen connections, and build resiliency among our students, and of course, all of that put together promotes academic success. Unfortunately, our school psychologists couldn't be with us this morning, they are busy in their schools, doing all those things I had just explained to you, but I am going to just share them, I'm going to share with you statements that they made on how they, the actions that they're doing to promote success in their schools. Amanda Hartwig has been with us for 12 years, and she helps students build self-confidence, just encouraging them to do the very Just encouraging them to do the very best that they can. Ashley Biesel has been with us for three years and she assists by reinforcing positive behavior supports. Dr. Anne Santos, she has been with us for one year and she sparks positive growth by just being, by smiling and being friendly with everybody she encounters. Dr. Christine Hurley has been with us for three years and she sparks growth by having a welcoming, a safe welcoming environment in her building. Shepherd Stevenson has been with us, he's, he's new with us this year actually, Shep is. And he, important to him is the respect and dignity in having professionalism when he interacts with all staff and students and supports them on their educational journey. Christine Grace has been with us for 28 years and she is also our department chair and she maintains our Twitter account where you, where she posts information about child development, mental health, and just learning opportunities for staff in the community. Carol Klink has been with us for 16 years and she focuses on, in order to spark growth, she works with families on improving attendance for our students, handling crises, and having groups for students to work with some anger management. Gary O'Neill has been with us for 15 years and he is, he sparks growth in students by being a valuable asset to our evening counseling. We definitely see a lot of students through that counseling center and he is a very important part of that. Dr. Lisa Longworth has been with us for 21 years and she, she looks for smiles and she brings forth her smile throughout the day to just make students, hopefully have students feel a little bit more positive as they go through their school day. Alyssa Xavier has been with us for five years and she has an open door, just keeping her door open to be available for, for students and staff. Stephanie Barnes is joining us this year as well and she's applying her knowledge that she has to provide supportive learning environments. Amelie Katsouris is new with us this year as well and just, her actions in greeting students and staff every day with a cheerful and warm smile adds positivity to their days. I want to end with a video that I have to thank Mary Ann Williams, gracious, she is amazing what she has done for us. We just want to give more awareness to the community on the role of the school psychologists and what they do in the schools and what that looks like. So we put together a video that we will then post on our Student Services webpage as part of the SMCPS information for families.
We'll also tweet it out as well.
Yes.
There was a bit of conversation about how best to bring you the school psychologists and give you an insight into their work without bringing them out of the schools during a day meeting just because it's just, it's, it.
Sorry.
It, so, a lot of work is going into putting together the, the video.
Well, last year I used to get in a lot of fights and I wouldn't think before I do it, I'll just do it. But since I've been with Dr. Hurley, I think before I do it.
Like if I'm having trouble in math or something, she will help me and she helped me deal with other people.
A school psychologist is really a school-centered or school-based professional that's knowledgeable on any sort of number of student needs, whether it's academic development, social, emotional, or behavioral development, or mental health needs.
School psychologists are so valuable in so many fronts to so many stakeholders in our school. They're a wonderful resource for teachers, for behavioral support or instructional support. They're a wonderful liaison to families. When we're giving information to families, the school psychologist can really help us explain it in a deeper way and always follow up with resources for the family.
The school psychologists are really great at providing parents with resources and outside support that parents might not necessarily know about, that are available to them through the county or through other organizations. They are really good at being able to meet those parents' needs, answer those questions, kind of cut through the teacher-education jargon and make that bridge between a classroom and a family.
And as far as the teachers, the school psychologist can push in and work with students and give teachers strategies just to make it the best environment for students.
One of the big things that we do is in that consultation role with teachers in their classrooms, whether it be special education teachers or general education teachers. What I like to tell a lot of people is that school psychologists are really kind of like the general practitioner of a school. We know a lot about a lot of different things and so it's really nice to be able to have the opportunity to go in there and work with a teacher.
Lots of times they're able to really tease out the finer points of a disability and help us understand those processing disorders and difficulties that the child has. But even more importantly is the support they give us for students who are having a difficult time in the classroom, whether behaviorally or with those processing things.
I had a student that just was, was having a tough time and they gave that student a voice. They were, they were able to tell me strategies I could use to help the student best.
I feel like it made a difference because like I don't argue with people, I don't let people get to me, I just walk away from the problem.
We've had two students in the past two years who had significant behavioral issues and the typical behavior strategies that we used really were not being effective. Working with the school psychologists, we were able to provide strategies and supports that really helped us identify the child's specific needs, design a program that really met those specific needs, and then use that data that we collected to find the right program and the right fit for the child.
School psychologists have a very diverse range of experiences and I think one of the things in St. Mary's County that we're able to bridge some gaps with military families and deployment. And that's not something that a lot of families really know that we have personnel in the schools that can help them with it. Spend a lot of time talking with parents of kindergarteners coming in because that's a big transition. May spend a lot of time talking with families about high school and what children are looking to do when they transition from high school into sort of their young adult life. We really are, as school psychologists, trained to serve children until they're about 18 to 20 years of age. And I think it's important for families and community members to know that any concern that they have is not small, it's not something that we haven't seen before or something that we don't want to talk with them about because student success really is anchored in schools and families working together.
They bridge the gap between the uncertainties and uncertainties and bring awareness to say that we're here to support you, these are what we're gonna do as a team here and these are what we can provide you with resources to help at home.
She's an advocate for Safe Space, which is creating an environment where students feel safe and comfortable coming to talk to, whether it's the counselors or herself. She works closely with us in that respect, making sure that the students that she's meeting with also build relationships with us in the event that we can tag-team and work together collaboratively for the student's best interests.
Which is so very important because our kids really, we're seeing the effects of some of the stresses that they go through outside of school, they're bringing them into school, and that whole mental wellness aspect of student development. The role is a positive step in providing professional expertise in some real key areas for our students.
Parents have a lot of concerns regarding how their children are doing in school and they really are entrusting us with their kids for a large chunk of their day and ultimately a large chunk of their life early on. So it's great to be able to bridge that gap and work with parents on what are we seeing at the school level, but also what are their concerns at home? We are here to support their children and their families from kindergarten through 12th grade and beyond.
She wants you to succeed.
Very nice, very nice. It's just, that's a.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll take a short break.
Take a short break for photos. Thank you.
Alright, I'd like to reconvene our meeting. Let's see, public comment?
Yes, we do have one.
Okay. Okay, let's see. The Board welcomes, welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider but not to comment. This is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. This Board will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students since this is outside the scope of our public comment. We also sit as an appellate body and both student and employee appeals, so we cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate. To maintain the ability of the Board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding individual student personnel issues cannot be presented. Speakers must sign at the beginning of the meeting. Each speaker is limited to 30 minutes and you may not.
Thirty?
Sorry, three. Three, see? For speaker.
Do we revise that?
I know, we did, yes, I didn't tell you. The Board encourages, so three minutes and you may not yield your time to someone else. We encourage speakers to also present your written statements to the Board Secretary who then distributes copies to all members. Okay.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm fulfilling a promise I made the other day to Ms. Allen, which I said I would come and annoy you. So that's my, my goal today. I have, my credentials are long and varied. I spent 36 years in a classroom in all kinds of different ways. So what I tend to do is represent the nitty-gritty of what goes on in classrooms and in schools. And the first thing I'm gonna ask you or suggest, I hope you know the number of times police have been called to each school and I hope you know the number of officers that have been called in each case. And I would like, would hope that the public would get that information because it's gonna tell you a lot about the nitty-gritty of what's going on inside the schools. Okay. Now, my, one of my favorite things is testing. And you all love testing, it's been around for a while. There's been, what is it, Race to the Top, No Child Left Behind, et cetera, et cetera. Testing for everything you think of. In fact, it got so, so difficult that legislature stepped in and said, enough, enough, you can only do this. The problem with testing, the way it is set up currently, is that it has no direct benefit to the students. It is a measurement tool for school systems. So why should you use all these talented students and the untalented students to measure the school system? This is what I propose and I, I'm aware that you can't do anything directly about it because it's not there, but there's a way to deal with this. I would suggest giving a high-stakes exit test in, at the end of the senior year in place of all others. Here's the way that works. The students, well, you probably know this, seniors are done by the end of their first semester, you know that, right? They all want, they're all gonna go somewhere else, they're trying to get out of school, they go to community college, then they go, actually, a lot of them just go home or drive around, whatever. So that last semester, senior years, except for some of the courses they actually have to, have to deal with, is, they're done. They got, they see what's going on. So here's the idea, you give an exit test at the end of the senior year, in April, you discontinue attendance requirements. In January and in February and March, you set up all the review classes that they might possibly need. So now, they're gonna have to pass this test to get a diploma. And you set up a series of tests. They get, they take a certain grade, they get a plain old diploma. If they get to the next level, they may get a higher-level diploma and they might be given a free tuition for the first year in community college or trade school. If they reach the next level, then they're gonna get maybe a free tuition in a, for a semester in a state university. And this.
Do you have your written statement?
Yep.
Okay. Can you provide it to Mrs. Edwards since your three minutes is expired?
I.
Do you mind doing that?
I knew I was gonna run out of time. Anybody wants to, talk to me later, I'll be around.
Okay, thank you very much. Any additional public comment?
No.
Okay, thank you. Alright, with that, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we have our first information item, which is Ms. Tammy McCord.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before you, we have the October revenue report. Our county income has come in at 50%, or at $51 million. State income is at 33%, which is right on target for the state income. And total revenues received year-to-date is $85.9 million, representing 40.89% of our budget. On the expenditure side, all items are coming in on target, there are no concerns. Bottom line, encumbrance is outstanding, at $145.7 million. Encumbrance is plus expenditures, we're at $190.6 million, representing 90.66% of our budget. Are there any questions?
I don't have anything.
No.
No.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, and we will go then back to Ms. Cheryl Long for the Evening High School Program.
Hello again, Ms. Long. Welcome, Mr. Watson.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. We're here to talk to you this morning about the Evening High School Program. The Evening High School Program is an option for our students to support the needs of students with various challenges. You know, as we talked in, Ms. Washington, you talked this morning about some of the folks that you met through the GED program. We certainly know in our community that we have students that have challenges in getting to school with attendance and/or with grades. They have, unfortunately, those other responsibilities in the home maybe that are taking them away from coming to school in a timely manner. And it makes it very difficult for them to attend the traditional day program. So, in looking at the needs of our students, both with attendance, maybe some grades that get in the way of their graduation, we are proposing the Evening High School Program as in, another option for them to, another flexible plan for them, for their graduation. For participation in Evening High School, they will be recommended by their high school principal and it will be, we will be looking at them through a process like the Pupil Services Team process where the administrator, the parent, the counselor, and the student will come together and look at where, what the needs of that student is currently with their program as far as graduation. And depending on what those needs are, we will make a plan for them in he, in Evening High School. So it's gonna be, it will be flexible as far as the courses and what their schedules look like and we'll talk further about that. The proposed start date for Evening High School is November 27th. They, it would run from Monday through Thursday, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And the model is a blended learning environment, so there will be a blend of Apex courses which are online and teacher-led courses as well. So we will have teachers there in the building. We are looking at a maximum of about 80 students.
Good morning. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the courses that we're going to offer as Ms.
As Ms. Long said and mentioned, is that, uh, this is a, uh, this isn't an alternative pathway, it's basically an alternative to a current pathway. So, um, it is very important for students to be able to have opportunities to meet their graduation requirements, not only in the traditional way going, during the, uh, traditional hours, operating hours of schools. But many, many factors impact why students might need this Evening High School Program. So for that reason, um, there, we can't offer as many courses as the traditional high school, obviously, because of time, um, because of the amount of time that they would spend, um, during the Evening High School, uh, during the weekend hours. Uh, they, we can eventually get to a point where students would be able to attend Evening High School for all four years. They could attend ninth through tenth, or through twelfth grade, um, and earn their high school diploma, um, at Evening High School with these courses offered. Uh, so, uh, obviously, we would need four years of English, uh, because that's a state requirement. Um, the three social studies courses listed there are required courses for graduation, as well as multiple different pathways as far as CRD pathway, uh, or the CRD business and financial management, uh, pathway. Other courses, uh, again, some, most of these are required courses. Uh, Algebra One, uh, your math courses that, uh, students will be able to take throughout their four years. And then your science courses, your required PE health course, and then your required fine arts would be offered through crafts. Like to discuss a little bit about staffing. The great thing about this program is there are no new FTEs required to run Evening High School. It is going to be a, um, kind of a stipend position for administrators and teachers and counselors. And, um, you, this is being funded through, special ed, position is being funded through Special Education Budget. The unfilled, we have a, currently, we have an unfilled supervisor position within the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. Um, so that's helping, uh, fund the Evening High School proposal, as well as through retirements and attrition, um, and transportation budget as well to help fund the Evening High School. So again, this, the great thing is, is that our current teachers, our current administrators, our current counselors within the school system are going to, um, be the staff of this Evening High School. So again, there's no new, uh, full-time educators, um, required to run the Evening High School Program. Questions?
Um, I have an odd question, but are there, so after seven o'clock when the program ends for the day, um, are there any like transportation, um, options for students who aren't able to like have their parents pick them up or something like that?
Great question.
Yeah, we are going to have vouchers available for students. Um, there is the STS bus that does the Great Mills route down there, so that will be an option.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Mm-hmm.
Good question.
We will, it will be most likely the responsibility of the student and the parents to get them to Evening High School. Um, but in situations like that, um, with the budget that we have, um, we will, are able to offer some, um, vouchers for STS.
Thank you.
Could you please explain what CRD is?
CRD is the pathway that's, um, really a work experience pathway, so they take two courses in the CRD pathway.
Career Research Development.
Career Research Development, thank you, yes. And so they take, uh, three courses in that, and the, uh, CRD pathway, traditional pathway, their last year, their senior year, they have to earn, I believe, two hundred and seventy, I think, hours of, uh, work experience. Um, and teachers would go and, you know, evaluate them and look at them in that experience. The other way that they can get the CRD credit, uh, through Evening High School is through the business management. Uh, there's five courses offered in that kind of pathway, and we're proposing that they could take any four of those five courses. Um, they would still have a work experience, um, not as many hours if they choose that pathway, um, but not as many courses if they choose the opposite pathway, if that makes sense.
Now, you spoke about, Roma was asking about transportation, and you spoke about the STS bus. So are you focusing more on the Great Mills area, the Lantertown area? Or where, you know, where are you focusing in order to be pulling these students from?
Yeah, for the initial.
Population.
Yeah, for the initial pilot, yes, the Great Mills area.
Okay. And just so that I'm clear, that you said that the teachers are staff that's already here and that you will be going out to get, um, look for people, uh, you know, staff members, administrators from our pool that we, our cur, that are current employees?
Yes, ma'am, the, um, the jobs have been posted. Um, they are extra, you know, they are essentially stipend pay. Um, so it's no new FTEs, they are current St. Mary's County Public School employees that we hope to fill these positions. Uh, we also recognize the fact that since these people, quote, have a day job, um, that they may not be available Monday through Thursday, um, every, every day of the week for Evening High School. So we foresee, uh, multiple people possibly filling one role. For instance, um, maybe two English teachers splitting the four days, or, um, two administrators splitting the, the time at the Evening High School.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Uh, and Mr. Watson, you kind of answered my question. Uh, when I first heard no FTE additions, uh, I was thinking of a zero-sum game where, uh, somehow, uh, they, you would lose some of their capabilities in the afternoon, I mean, in the regular school hours, that's not the case, is what you're saying.
Correct.
So they would do, they would work the full, uh, the full number of hours and then it should be an additional pay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we recognize that a lot of folks have, um, evening responsibilities, whether that's administrator, teachers, or coaches that, um, might not be able to do every single day, so that's why we foresee multiple people possibly filling, um, a single role.
Uh, I just, I would just comment, I think it's a wonderful program. I mean, it's, you, 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 you look at the globally, you know, we're here to teach the children and give them a great education, get them out of school, hopefully onto college or some trade school. And, uh, this is a, uh, in my opinion, uh, and it gives the, the students opportunities so they don't fall through cracks, so to speak. So, I compliment you on this.
Thanks.
I'll, I'll just, I'll echo your statements, and I mentioned this the first time, it was proposed that sitting through the Fairlead graduation ceremonies every year, um, you know, when you, when you hear the challenges from the students as to what they have to go through to get to school every day, um, you know, some of them are the heads of the har, of their households and, you know, they have younger siblings that they need to take care of. I think that this is another option for students that we have in our school system, and it might free up and take some away of those life stressors that they should not have at, you know, thirteen through eighteen years old. Um, I just have a couple of que, so, the, um, the location of the school will be at Fairlead?
Fairlead One, Fairlead One Academy.
And then how, can you guys go through the process as to how you would identify or how someone would be selected for the Evening High School?
Sure, as we come up now to the end of the first marking period, um, Dr. Hybel and his team will be looking at, uh, current attendance and grades and, um, historical as well for students, you know, um, that are higher than ninth grade. Um, in looking at students that maybe have challenges, like you said, you know, if they're had, if they're helping in their household or whatever, look at students that have other challenges that are getting in the way of them, um, participating in the day school program. And those are the ones that would be identified, um, reaching out to the parents to have a team meeting with the principal and the counselor, administrator, and the student to see if this, you know, if they are, um, interested in an option such as this.
Okay, and then if you have, um, would it be open, let's say you had a student that wasn't Fairlead that would be interested in Evening High School, uh, even though they weren't coming out of your, your, the Great Mills target area?
Right.
Would they still be eligible, or are you solely focusing on that high school?
No, absolutely, we'll consider other needs from the other high schools as well, yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Washington?
Uh, this is a re, really interesting concept. So will these students be counted as full-time equivalent and therefore counted in our official enrollment count?
Absolutely, yes, they will in their home.
Even though they are going part-time?
Right, they'll be counted in their home high school.
Well, it, so, so it depends, so first of all, we, uh, student enrollment is verified by September thirtieth. So all these students are enrolled within our school system. What we're doing is we're waiting till the end of the first marking period to take a real deep, comprehensive look at how our currently enrolled, full-time students are performing in the day school environment. And if they're infrequently attending or they're not making academic progress, we're going to pull them in and, and talk about other options beyond a traditional day school experience. So they're already, they're already enrolled, they're already full-time students. If they enroll full-time in Evening High School, they will be getting with a blended instructional model. They're not only getting the three hours per, uh, per session at the, at, at the Evening High School, they are also doing online work through Apex, so it's a, it's a completely rounded-out curriculum. This is not a, a new concept necessarily for St. Mary's County Public Schools. We had it for all through the nineties and the early part of the two thousands, and we stepped away from Evening High School because we incorporated into day school Apex and the recovery during the traditional day. And that has met a great deal of our need. We have two of our schools that are above ninety-three, ninety-four percent on-time graduation. Great Mills remains, uh, lags slightly behind that. And so we want to bring back another option for students with Evening High School. The difference is, we are completely covering the cost of Evening High School within the salary lines that we have, so it is offered to the students in this pilot program without cost. In the past, we did Evening High School, but the children have to, the students had to pay for their enrollment. Um, we're going to see how, how they, how, how well it's received, how well the kids move through it. Um, I, I'm, I'm really excited about perhaps this being the thing that gets back the, the one or two percent of students that, that aren't being successful at Great Mills High School within all the offerings that we currently have during day school and with recovery.
I think Mr. Smith answered, um, a bunch of my questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And I was going to ask about, uh, the transportation, the vouchers, so the students will have the vouchers. Um, and now, how we had it in the past, and how is this different from the past? And what will make it work this time? You, you must have gotten my questions. Uh, and we have Fair, and we have Fairlead Academy One and Two. How does Evening High School better meet the needs of the students than Fairlead Academy?
Uh, yeah, so.
Somebody might say, well, why can't they be enrolled in Fairlead One or Two?
Right, so Fairlead One or Two are strictly day programs, and this would be the evening option.
Yeah, and, and Fairlead One and Two, keep in mind, we identify those students out of eighth grade before they have, uh, challenges at, at high school. And one of the strengths of, of Fairlead is kind of that cohort, we bring those kids, those sixty-plus kids in, and they rise with the same group, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, and they carry all the way through. We do have some students that come into Fairlead perhaps after an unsuccessful ninth grade year. We do have students that leave Fairlead and then go, whoa, I need to come back to Fairlead, and that happens. But the Evening High School kind of fills the, fills the slot for the kids who opted not to do Fairlead because it, it's all voluntary, you can opt not to do Fairlead, having, have gone to, have gone to the traditional day high school and not been, not been successful. It's a, you know, there's sixteen hundred and fifty kids in, in day school, and it starts at, at eight o'clock, and there's a lot of, you know, there are a lot of opportunities for distraction in something that big. And Evening High School gives us an opportunity to take that group of students, the ones that didn't do Fairlead, the ones that opted to go to a comprehensive high school, are struggling a bit, and give them a great, uh, alternative, um, to move them through their, through their pathway.
Okay. More answers to my questions.
Okay.
Okay, will the students in Evening High School who work during the day be able to get credit for work study or some kind of independent study? Is that what you mean at CRD?
That's, yes, ma'am, Career Research Development, yeah.
Okay. Okay, with Evening High School, will the students be able to participate in sports and clubs at their home hi, high school?
Uh, I think based on the time, four to seven, that's when most practices and games are. So it would be very difficult for a student, um, to be able to participate in evening af, after-school activities at their traditional high school.
Okay. Since some of the students qualify for free and reduced lunch, will they snacks be provided for them?
Great question, we, um, just longer I met with, uh, Mrs. Dorn yesterday, uh, there's, actually, there's something called a supper program, and it's, uh, for students and, um, non-farm students. So all students who attend Evening High School will be provided through, I want to get this right, we're filled with acronyms, the C A C F P, which is the Child and Adult Care Food Program. Um, it's fairly in-state funded, and, um, we meet the criteria where the location is at Fairlead One to provide, um, a supper or a snack to Evening High School students.
That's excellent, I like that, okay. Is it possible for students to finish Evening High School in less than four years with the inclusion of Apex where they can work on their own independently?
It's possible, it's possible at the traditional high school as well because the twenty-one credits required, you could, um, you would have to double up in English. You could essentially earn those credits, um, within three years and apply for early graduation.
So, uh, this would be a wonderful opportunity for our teachers, who many of them work part-time jobs anyway. So this would be a part-time job in their particular field. So, the bus schedule, so school will get out at seven?
Yes, ma'am.
So, have you talked about coordination, so the bus will be coming by shortly and the students don't have to wait an hour? Because there are not many STS buses, so that's just a thought, so it'll be coordinated so when they get out, because if you're going to have eighty students, and most of them are coming from Great Mills, so they won't have to wait so long in the dark for the bus to come. So this is a wonderful opportunity for our students because many of our students are economically disadvantaged and they need to work to support themselves as far as buying, helping to buy clothes and shoes and things for their family. I was in the social work field and I know about things like that. So they can work during the day, get credit for the work, get work experience, and also get the educational experience during the evening. So I think it's a good opportunity for our students, and we have to have as many pathways as possible for them to be college and career-ready, whether coming out of Evening High School or regular high school. So, um, and this is a, is this a pilot program?
This is a pilot for this year, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, I think it's a great idea, I remember the old traditional Evening High School, but we have to change things and bring it up to date to what our needs are today. It worked back then, for that time, but then with technology and Apex, I remember we got rid of it. So now, with the needs of the students and the technology and being creative with the financial resources that we have, that we're able to do this for our students.
Efficient, not creative.
What did I say?
Don't use creative with, uh, efficient.
Okay, effective and efficient use of our resources, which is one of the board's goals.
Don't quote creative, Jackie. Efficient, efficient.
Okay.
This is, it is.
It is, it's gonna work, and we're gonna make it work within the confines that we have. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
She's always critiquing. Anyway, um, thank you, it sounds like a wonderful program.
I want, you want them to answer the question about the STS buses and the time?
Um, I didn't know if they, I didn't know, do, do you have an answer for that one already, like?
Well, it i, it, you're right, it is a good consideration, certainly. And I think, you know, as we have the students enrolled in the program, we'll have to determine, do they have transportation or do they need it? And then we'll look further into that.
Because, well, when I was in high school, the students caught the public buses, and we had a pass. And that pass was good for so many hours per day. So hopefully, this pass will be good for our students to get to work too. And get to school too, so it's this span. And the buses often were there when we walked out of school, the buses were waiting for us. So, I don't, as long as they don't have to wait too long in the dark for the bus.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I think really all of my questions have been answered. I'm, I just really want to stress that, uh, we're not going to have any additional FTEs.
Yes.
Um, and that this is all going to be covered through, um, current budget savings, if you will, um, and, and reprogramming. I think what I really like about this is that, um, over time, one of the ideals people have sought to reach has been, um, sort of an individualized education program for every single student, whether they were special needs or not. And, um, this is, I believe, uh, a step that we are taking to ensure that there is an individualized education program that will fit as many students, uh, um, as we have, the, the many needs that they have. So I appreciate that, um, you continue to look not just at our successes, but what our challenges continue to be. And to figure out, um, where can we have local control to make changes and to offer things that will allow our students to be successful in the way they need to be successful. Um, and to give them a comprehensive education, um, not something that's watered down, but something that's going to meet them where they are and carry them to where they need to be. So thank you for offering this, appreciate it very much, and I look forward, really, in the spring to hearing about how it's working. Um, and.
Um, and if, um, if it's something that you are gonna recommend that we continue, uh, and any changes that you might recommend in, in going forward. So let us know how it goes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wendy Tarn, our Maryland Seal of By Literacy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I get to talk to you twice in two weeks. It's great. Um, I too had an opportunity to attend the, uh, GIS symposium, and it was really, um, it was exciting for me because there were quite a few world language, um, students who were there really highlighting the importance of learning languages at an early age. That was fun. So I'm thrilled to be here today to share with you some highlights in world languages, um, overall. Um, here to talk about the Maryland Seal of By Literacy. The Maryland, the Seal of By Literacy is an award given to students who have demonstrated high proficiency in more than one language. So finally, we have something that can validate languages, the importance of languages. Um, this is something that's been, it, it was something that Maryland wanted to start a few years ago, and it took quite a while to get through the legislator to get it passed. But, um, this is something that finally recognizes that language learning is extremely important for our students. That seal right there, it goes away after the slide, but that's, when we refer to the actual seal and the, you know, we'll, if we're gonna be putting it on diplomas and things, it's gonna look like that. Um, the Seal of By Literacy began in two thousand and eleven in California. They were the first state to implement it. Um, since then, we have twenty-five other states who have taken it, taken it on. And in two thousand and sixteen, it finally got passed through the state legislator, and we were able to have the bill. I think we actually tried in two thousand and fourteen to get it passed, but it took a while. In order for a student to receive the Seal of By Literacy, a student must pass Part English Ten with a score of four or five, and receive an intermediate-high proficiency score on an assessment aligned to the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages, their proficiency guidelines. So with world languages, our, um, everything we do is under the umbrella of ACTIVL. So when we go to our conventions, it's the ACTIVL, um, convention. So they have set proficiency guidelines for our students. Um, obviously, we want to, to verify that a student is proficient in two languages. So English, we've got the Part Score, and then any other language, um, that they are taking. So our students, for instance, who are in AP classes, they would be, um, ideally the ones who would take the AP class, they would take the test at the end of the year, and if they score a four or a five, that actually equals out to a, um, uh, intermediate-high score, they would be eligible for the Seal of By Literacy. But just to give you an idea of, um, that, that range of proficiency, that's what a teacher needs in order to become a teacher. So if they were to take the Praxis, they would need, um, or if they were to take any of the other, um, tests to become a teacher, they would need intermediate-high. So student taken, taking a test and earning the Seal of By Literacy, um, their junior year is, already has a lot of what they need just to become a teacher. And as you know, um, languages are a critical need. It's a, you know, teaching in general is, is a critical need that we have, but in particular, world language teachers are extremely, um, valuable, and they're hard to come by, so. The benefits of the Seal of By Literacy, obviously, it promotes foreign language study that prepares students for life beyond high school. Um, we have a number of English language learners who come to us who are literate in their first language. And, um, you know, when we come to them, we put them in English classes, and we, we want them to learn English. And so, um, this is a way for them to also, they can certainly take a test. A, a student coming to us in ninth grade who is literate in their native language, Spanish, for instance, can, um, can take one of the, the tests that ACTIVL has. It's not just the AP exam, there's a multi, there's a multiple range of tests that they can take. And, um, they can take that on their own, on their own time. And if they pass, and they also are passing the Part Ten, then they too are eligible. They do not need to be sitting in an AP class in order to earn the Seal of By Literacy. Um, in fact, I met with a student yesterday. We have a student at Leonardtown High School who's here with her parents from Italy. They're here because her parents are working on base, we have quite a few Italians. Um, she's one of the Italians, and she is really interested in getting started on taking one of these other tests. She's not sitting in an AP class right now. Um, but she is taking, I think she's in Level Three Latin, um, you know, and she's Spanish. She wants to take it in Latin, so she's past Part. Why not take it in her native language? So, um, we're gonna be setting that up. So I was able to go with her onto the ACTIVL site to show her how to, to sign up for the test, and if she needs a proctor, I would be willing to do that for her. Um, another benefit, obviously, is that it's going to encourage our students now to work towards taking AP classes and not just finishing their languages, um, after that second credit. We are really moving towards getting kids to understand that, um, we're not taking languages just to get them, just as a check-in-the-box. You know, you really wanna take the language to, to learn and to become proficient in it. So you need to get up to that Level Three and Level Four class. Um, it, we have right now, this year, two schools, Spring Ridge and Esperanza, who have dropped languages down into the seventh grade. So we have a cohort of kids that are taking, uh, seventh grade language. And actually, at Esperanza, they started last year, so they have a, a group of eighth graders taking Level Two. So, you know, by their junior year, they can be in an AP class, so. So dropping it down and allowing them the opportunity to start earlier is, is a plus. Um, giving students, obviously, another benefit would be giving, it gives students a competitive edge in the employment market, as well as an increased opportunity for higher education. Uh, this summer, we had a few students, uh, that were seniors that took the AP exam in Spanish, and, um, they all passed, but half of them got a four or a five. So one student in particular, you'll see her picture in a minute, uh, was so excited about this. And, um, we pulled the kids in, even though they were getting ready to, you know, AP scores come in in July, so we had to pull them in after the fact, after they graduated. Um, but we made a real big deal with her parents. We, we spoke about what this meant, um, take it to your college. This particular child was going to Lafayette in Pennsylvania, and, um, the, the entire department wanted to meet with her to talk about this, and she's gonna get credits for, um, you know, her Spanish classes. She's gonna be placed higher, she doesn't need to take any tests, she's already proven that, um, that she's, that she's proficient. So that was really neat. Last year, we decided to softly roll out the Seal of By Literacy. In my mind, I was thinking, we have students that are getting ready to take the AP exam that are, um, or we have students who took the AP exam the following, the previous year. And we already know that we have recipients, why not let them have the certificate? Why not recognize that right now? So we went ahead, we pulled the names of the students that had those AP scores, those eligible AP scores. Um, I verified their Part Scores, and everything was good to go. So they didn't even realize that they were gonna be recognized, but, um, we had fourteen, when we counted the summer students, we had fourteen Seal of By Literacy recipients last year. Um, we're hoping to increase that number, we will increase that number every year, there's not a doubt. But we were only one of seven counties that actually did it, so this, our state supervisor really made a big deal about it. I think, um, there's gonna be nine or ten this coming school year, so it's slowly but surely. But PG County's one of them, and, um, we've had to do a lot of, those of us who have implemented it have been able to kind of go through the whole implementation, um, with our other LEA supervisors. So these are last year's recipients at Great Mills High School, we had seven. Um, we recognized them during the senior awards ceremony, you can see them there. Um, this is Josie Brodevier, she was at Lafayette, so she's the one who was called in by the World Language Department at her, at her college, and they recognized her for that, so that was exciting. Um, these are just some of the things. Last year, we gave out the certificate, and then there's a letter by the state, signed by the superintendent, um, the state superintendent. So we gave those out last year. We have not put the seal, the actual seal, on anything, um, so we're gonna try to work out that over the next month. Um, the state has purchased the, the medal for us. We're hoping to, we'll, we'll talk about that later, but it was, it was pretty expensive to get the seal actually made, so the state went ahead and paid for that. So if we wanna hop on board and purchase some of those, the cost is very minimal. So we're hoping to, um, maybe have that for our seniors. So right now, we have, um, about, I think we have forty-nine students sitting in AP world language classes. Um, we did not have that many last year, so we, we're already immediately seeing an increase in our numbers, um, in the upper levels going up. But we have almost a hundred in Level Four this year. So across the, we, we offer six languages, so across the board, we have nearly a hundred sitting in Level Four this year. So we're really hoping that, uh, our AP numbers will go up even more next year. So just to reiterate, they're not, it doesn't, they don't have to be sitting in a class, they don't have to take the AP exam. There's a whole list of other exams that they can take on their own time. So our job is gonna be to kind of, um, we're gonna be really promoting it throughout the high schools. I'm gonna be over at Leonardtown High School, um, probably in the next week, as soon as things calm down. And I wanna put together a bulletin board, and the students that were presenting at their GIS, uh, symposium yesterday, we're gonna be taking a lot of their little blurbs, that they have some amazing little, um, research brain information that we're gonna add to the bulletin board to really pump up the, um, the Seal of By Literacy. Um, just kinda get it out there, make sure, you know, parents are aware of it. We handed out lots of, thousands of flyers this year, um, during orientation. Um, but we really wanna get the word out, because we want students who are walking along, who aren't necessarily sitting in a world language class, to go to their te, go to the counselor, um, and say, you know, I wanna take one of these tests, so we're working on that. Any questions?
Anyone?
I don't have any questions, but I wanted to say that, um, especially at the end, towards the end of last year, I know you prob, you did a great job with educating, I think, the teachers, um, because I was in a world language class last year, AP language for Spanish, and then I was also talking to students at other schools. And, um, as you were softly rolling it out, we still, we were taken aback because we didn't think that we would get credit if, if we passed the exam with a four or a five. Or we didn't even know that there were other avenues if you, because the AP exam is rather expensive. Um, but the teachers, um, in my school, in Great Mills, and then a few other schools, did a good job about educating the students in their class. And then, um, when it came to trying to encourage, um, ninth graders and tenth graders to take AP, AP Spanish, or, um, whether it be French, whatever it was, um, we got to explain to them the seal and what they could get for the fact that, um, that it's just like taking an English class, um, and there were, there were no extra hoops you had to jump through other than the exam at the end. So, um, I think I'm looking forward to seeing how many more students get it as the years go by.
Yeah, yeah, me too, thank you.
I think it's a great skill to be promoted, um, and encouraged to have more than one language. And I think it, like Roma was saying, that you're, you know, trying to get the word out. And, and to those that are not taking an AP class, to be able to find another avenue, to be able to take a test, um, in order to also receive that seal, I think is a good idea.
Um, can you finish?
Oh, done.
Um, the, um, I'm a strong supporter of ESOL. Um, my question is, um, the students, uh, that come from, uh, foreign-born, that come in, um, this, this particular program will give them the necessary proficiencies in English language, and that they will become, English will become their first language. Is that correct?
Um, well, it depends on when they come to us. I mean, when their native language, their mother tongue is their mother tongue. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't matter when they, when they come, whether or not they, um, become proficient in English, um, is another story, because they could come to us as eleventh graders, and so they have two years with us. Um, they make great strides, but, um, you know, if, what we want to do is encourage the parents of our elementary English language learners to continue that first language at home, um, and to not just take it away. That's generally what, what parents want to do. They want them here, they want to, they want their children to speak English. Um, but we know, and research says, that if you're, if you are literate in two languages, then you, um, it's much easier to learn, you know, a third language. So they end up doing, if they're, it, at home, reading in their native language and going to school and learning English, their English is gonna, is gonna soar. So we want them to continue at home, using their same language, and then by the time they get to high school, whenever they wanna take any of these tests, um, you know, or to continue with the heritage Spanish class, we're, we're exploring that right now. Getting some of these kids who are Spanish-speaking to be in a class, in a Spanish class, and continue reading and writing and speaking in Spanish, um, so that they are eligible for these types of things too, yeah.
So I read an article some, a couple months ago about in Southern California, I think a third of the students, uh, Spanish was their first language. And, uh, believe me, I'm not dismerching at all, uh, uh, an individual going through school, uh, and not utilizing, you know, their native tongue. Um, but I have strong feelings about English as the primary language, not by law, but it's kinda worked pretty well since sixteen twenty. And we have folks that come from all over the world, and, um, they've done pretty well by assimilating into our country. And language is really the, is kind of the glue, in my opinion, it keeps things together. Uh, I applaud you for what you're saying about having, uh, native folks being able to, uh, keep that ability. Because you're right, I think the benefits when they get out of school, if they're multi, multilingual, uh, I think they'll do a much better job.
Yeah.
But I, I just, uh, I just wanted to, to make sure I was clear that, uh, while you're embellishing and helping the na, students with a native tongue to maintain that, uh, in, in no way is it affecting their ability to, to work, uh, with English as their first language.
No, it doesn't.
Thank you very much.
It doesn't, because they're sitting in biology in English, they're sitting in social studies in English. They're being, um, they're sitting in an ESOL class, being taught explicitly English. We want them to learn English, because we want them to be able to go out into college, or they, they can enter a career, and, um, they need to have English skills too. So, um, hang on to the, hang on to your native language, of course, because there's lots of benefits. We know what the benefits are. Um, but, but, but they're being taught, yeah, they're being taught, they're sitting in school, and they're being taught in English, where they're learning English through the content areas, so.
Thank you.
My only question res, resolved around the ESOL students and how they would, you know, fit into this program, and you've answered that, so thank you very much.
I think this is a wonderful avenue for our students to get this Maryland Seal of By Literacy, which only started in Maryland in twenty sixteen, and you're already on top of it. Um, it will help the students with employment. Uh, America is a diverse country with people who speak many different languages. So it is an advantage to our students and our future citizens that are coming up to be able to communicate in different languages. Also, during commencement, I guess this is to you, Mr. Smith, is it possible for asterisk or something to be put next to their name, that they earn that seal of, uh, Maryland Seal of By Literacy, and they could wear their emblem around their neck as other groups do?
Yeah, and Mrs. Tarr kind of alluded to the fact, the challenge is we don't get the AP scores back until July. So, so we can recognize all of the students who, in their eleventh grade year, sat for an AP test, they got the score back, and then as they go through commencement, this could be part of commencement. But for all of those seniors who are sitting for an AP language test, we won't be able to recognize them until the scores come back, and that's why that recognition at, at Great Mills.
And that's why having these kids taking a language right now in seventh grade, and hopefully, we can bring it down to, to all the middle schools next year. Um, so in four or five years, we'll be able to see, you know, um, those, at least a good cohort of kids, by their junior year, they're in an AP class.
So Mrs. Tarr feels very strongly that we should have more world language offerings in.
So Mrs. Tarr feels very strongly that we should have more world language offerings in middle school and into all the way down to sixth grade.
Well, I mean, at the G I S, you know, one of the presentations, um.
There was, yeah, I'm trying to remember her name.
Yeah, she talked about that, you know, by the age of fourteen, um, language is set in your brain. And so um it starts, when you introduce another language, it starts filtering out um that language, that new language. So getting them started just before puberty, you know? Just get, or right, right during that time, that's the perfect time.
Best time, right.
I know, so.
Thank you, Ms. Tarr.
Okay, you're welcome.
Um, any thought of um including American Sign Language as um one of these? I mean, I know we're talking about foreign languages, but.
American Sign Language is part of the Seal of By Literacy.
It is, good.
All six of our languages are eligible.
Okay. I, I wasn't sure since you hadn't mentioned that and people don't necessarily look upon that as a foreign language, if you will, or a world language.
And they are gonna change COMAR. Um, the wording right now with COMAR is, is, is not set up to have people really understand that it's part of world language. They're getting ready to change that.
Good.
But um the only difference with Sign Language and s, and Latin, I guess it is, is they don't have a list of tests that they are eligible to take. So we have multiple vendors that ACTIVL has approved. Tons of ways to earn the Spanish Seal of By Literacy by taking multiple tests. French, there's a lot out there. So there's very few for Latin and American Sign Language, but they're there, they're out there. So um the teachers all have the list, they're given to the students. Um, that's how the students are already starting to, they're already, already starting to give me, you know, send me questions about, how can I sign up?
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone have anything else on anything, any subjects? Okay. Let's see, the next board meeting will be on Wednesday, November twenty-ninth. That is after Thanksgiving and then it will be appropriate to begin with the holiday carols and wishes. And with that, we will see everyone then, this evening meeting at six o'clock. So we'll see you then.